All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, November ninth, 2021 at 6:00 P. M. This meeting will be conducted by a remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSAs, Section 403B, 2D, and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted August third, 2021, reflecting recent recommendations of the U.S. CDC and adoption by the State of Maine CDC pertaining to the conduct of meetings indoors in the public space. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight nine three five six five zero two five zero nine and password zero three one six two six or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could mute their computers, Councilor Hanselman will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence. Councilor Hanselman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could now take a moment of silence in honor of our military veterans for this week's upcoming Veterans Day. Thank you. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Hanselman. First item, roll call. I will call the roll. Councilor Martell?
Present.
Councilor Hanselman?
Present.
Councilor Tuttle is absent with notice. Councilor Stackpole?
Present.
Councilor Lanigan is absent with notice. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Present.
And I am Anne Marie Mistracchio, the mayor of the city of Sanford, which this evening we're joined by City Manager Stephen Buck and Larissa Ricketts, the City Manager's Executive Assistant. First item on the agenda is twenty-one five one six dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on Tuesday, October nineteenth, 2021. And I will remind everyone that the next, for those meetings, the two meetings that we're going to have minutes for, I was there, Councilor Stackpole, Deputy Mayor Hurley, and Councilor Martell, just to make it easier for voting.
We approve.
So, Councilor Martell, a motion to approve is by Councilor Stackpole.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Martell. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Councilor Martell?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
Abstain.
Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley? Can't hear you.
Yes. Sorry, I forgot, I muted for the...
And I am also a yes, that is four in favor and one abstention. Twenty-one dash five one seven dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the City Council held on Tuesday, October nineteenth, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
That motion by Councilor Martell, a second by Councilor Stackpole. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Councilor Martell?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
Abstain.
Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, that is four in favor and one abstention. Thank you. Mayor's report, City Council Subcommittee reports, and we have no Subcommittee reports, but I do have a short report this evening. November is National Runaway Prevention Month and has been presented each year since 2002 by the National Runaway Safe Line, the federally designated national communication system for runaway and homeless youth. Runaway youth are often expelled from their homes, have experienced trauma, struggle to meet basic needs, and are at increased danger of falling into high-risk situations, including human trafficking. Police Chief Anderson and the Sanford PD, along with other local organizations, are working to raise awareness, support, and resources for young people in the community and encourage all citizens to appreciate the role that we can all play in advocating for and providing safe alternatives to this vulnerable population of young people. WABAN was recently announced as winner of the 2021 Spirit of America Foundation Tribute for Outstanding Community Service. Spirit of America Foundation's main chapter considered the following impressive background information when choosing WABAN as a tribute winner. WABAN is a nonprofit corporation organized to develop and operate programs which promote the general welfare and education of children and adults with developmental and other disabilities. Through the support of the community, individuals, and fundraisers such as their annual telethon, Camp WABAN has blossomed into a vast organization, providing services and support to over 4,000 people annually. We add our congratulations to WABAN for this award and our appreciation for the exemplary service provided to the Sanford-Springville community for the past fifty years. And finally, Councilor Representative Tuttle is in the hospital. We send him our best wishes for a speedy recovery and look forward to his return to his seat on the council. Until then, please keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers, and I know he would appreciate your cards and well wishes. And for those who are want, he, he may be coming home from the hospital tomorrow. He is in Southern Maine Medical. I have spoken to his wife, and he was okay with me announcing this this evening. And that's all I have this evening. So, unless there are questions, I will go on to the City Manager's report. Steve?
All right, thank you. Pull this on the screen. So, the first is a general brief on the class-action opioid settlements. As the public awares, the city's part of the class-action suit against the major producers and distributors of opioids that have caused a national disaster of drug addictions. There are a number of parties being sued as part of that class-action suit. Counties, cities, and states are part of that class-action suit. Settlements for the Big Three is currently at $4.3 billion. The city is registered as for the pending settlements, so we'll be coming to the states first and then distributed to political subdivisions of counties and municipalities. Legal counsel has now advised us that it indicates that the council action will be requested in December. So, they were asking what the latest date in December is, so I told them December twenty-first. They'll be asking for the council's acceptance of that settlement agreement. So, I'll bring that to you, the legal advisement, give you a chance to review that at the, at that point in time, that you'll have a better understanding as to how that relates to the state settlement and then that distribution back down to us as a municipality. Be looking for that in December. I did note that there's a newly-elected workshop put on by Maine Municipal Association. Find those to be very educational and beneficial. It's done by Zoom, but it's in conflict with the ARPA Fund Workshop that we have for November thirtieth. Nonetheless, I have the information up here. For anybody that might not be attending the ARPA Workshop, we could make this available to you. I am seeking for when they're going to offer it again next, hopefully in January or February. I don't know that yet, but if, if that's the case, we can get councilors into it at that point in time. Next is the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA Fund Workshop that's been scheduled for November thirtieth at 5:00 P. M. This will be an educational workshop, which compiles a large inventory of potential uses and requests for the use of the city's $2.4 million in allocated funds. We have both proposed uses and we have requests that have come in there. I'm happy to announce that between myself, our finance director, and other request, we have more uses for the funds, allowable uses for the funds than we have funds. So, there'll be large areas to choose from as far as how the funds could be utilized. But the workshop will focus on these areas of utilization as defined by the act, and we have that built out in a multi-year format. You're going to have half a fiscal this year, two fiscal years, and then half of, of, of a, of a, the next fiscal year. So, you have till December thirty-first of 2024 to commit the funds, and then you have two years beyond that to expend the funds. We thought they had to be expended by the end of December thirty-first, 2024. It's actually, it has to be committed by that date, and you have up to two years after that to completely draw them down. During that workshop, we'll go over those utilizations. We've set the, we've set all of the, between the request and allowable uses and numbers associated to that. We get that set up in a multi-year format, so you can pick and choose by year as to where you might want the funding to go, and that will flow down through, and we can see what that would do for budget offsets as well as investments within the community and the potential good that can be done with this $2.4 million. The Police Department, this is a very positive point. The Police Department recently ran a promotional process for sergeant positions, either one or two. There's one known and one potential. Seven officers applied and received the study materials on September sixth. A written test was administered by Dirigo Safety. We have an independent testing firm that does these, these test scores. That was administered on October eighteenth. All seven candidates passed with high scores. I see that as a reflection of the commitment and the future leadership within the department. Oral birds, oral boards were administered on October twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, and the chief's interviews, oral boards were done on November fifth. A best candidate will be selected out of these seven candidates for the first sergeant slot, and if there's a second that opens up, we can draw from the same pool. So, I just wanted to extend my congratulations and appreciation to the department for the dedication and the depth within the department, as recently confirmed by this promotional process. So, kudos. Chief Anderson is, is on the line here with us tonight. Kudos to the department, and please pass on my appreciation for the hard work.
Thank you, Steve. I will.
Compliments to the Planning Department. We receive these on a somewhat regular basis, but I wanted to bring this one forward because, you know, we, we've been through some, some complaints with the Planning Department. I bring this one, one forward. It was issued by Ra, on October twenty-first of this year by Robert Rankin, who's the president of Rain Corp. He's a local developer here. Does a lot of project work in the community. So, it's good afternoon, Beth. We wanted to thank you for your dedication to our project over, over the years. You and the Planning Department have been an integral part of our development team. Your encouragement and compliments have been greatly appreciated. Spring of 2022 will bring some much-needed excitement to the downtown. So, that's in reference to the three-building project that's going to be constructed across the street from Central Park, across the street from City Office here. It'll be on School Street, and I believe it's, it's thirty-six residential units that will be constructed in that three-building complex. Good news for the Parks Department. The city via Lee Burnett applied to the Land and Water Conservation Fund again this year. We leveraged funding towards improvements at Carpenter Park. City has just been notified by the Maine Department of Alcohol and Forestry that the city will be awarded $154,750 from the National Parks Service Funds by early spring twenty of twenty-two, and that will go towards the Carpenter Project, which will go towards the construction of a splash pad and other improvements to the both fields and courts at Carpenter Park. I will note that I also, we have, we have the requisite, because this was a prior-year application, we have the requisite CIP matching funds in there already. It was in the prior-year funds. We've held those, and I also have put a placeholder for consideration for further improvements there under the ARPA. Under, into the ARPA, that, that park falls in a qualified census tract, which is only seven in the state of Maine. We have one of those. And parks' improvements in, in the qualified census tracts isn't allowable use under ARPA. So, we'll, we'll take a look at further embellishment of that particular project if the council so approves.
Steve, can I ask a question about this, please? Just for the council?
Yes.
Um, we will have a chance as a council, though, to look at the plan and if we want to tweak it or, you know, or is, is it, it's not anything that we're locked into exactly. It's not a plan, because I, I think there were, there's, actually, it, it seems like a lot of money, but it really isn't enough to do everything that we probably wanted to do, so we will have an opportunity to weigh in, correct?
Correct. I, I, I was going to grab it from this year's CIP. I ran out of time.
That's okay.
Or it clicked in my mind that actually it was in last year's CIP, so I'll go back and grab the project, and we'll bring...
I just think it might be nice to involve some of the community members that are in that area, that border the park especially, that have expressed some concerns, and, and I would really love to have some input into that.
Okay. Another positive point, the, the MV five sidewalk tractor that was purchased a couple of years ago has been a very difficult unit for us. We've had significant warranty issues with that. Public Works Director worked with our legal counsel. We thought we could implement the lemon law, but with them, we found out that there is no lemon law as it pertains to commercial vehicles and/or equipment. But we've had a very positive development. The local dealer for which we purchased that from has agreed to take the unit back. They'll take it back at $105,000, plus purchasing back all the attachments and the plow blades that we have in inventory. I find this to be a very reasonable offer, because we previously had put that up for sale and weren't getting anything approaching that. And thereby, we, we will preserve the positive working relationship we have with that local dealer and be able to move forward in a very positive manner, working with them in the future. So, I didn't, I didn't use the dealer's name in here. I didn't really feel that that was appropriate, but I do extend my appreciation for them to stepping to the table and addressing the city's concerns with this particularly unit. Small business representative to the Growth Council. The city's small business representative is appointed to serve on the newly-reorganized Growth Council Board of Directors is Gina Sawtelle. She's the owner of Above &amp; Beyond Catering located here in Sanford. Ms. Sawtelle has accepted the appointment and will start with a meeting scheduled for next week. Gina is also an excellent example of a small business owner who is operating and expanding in Sanford and has gone through a major site plan submission and, and has received her permits for ongoing, current and ongoing work there. That combination of the business perspective, growing and expanding business, as well as especially going through that major site plan submission and process, will bring an incredible perspective lent, lent into the future economic development initiatives as the Growth Council moves forward in such endeavors. Airport updates, quick updates in here. Ms. Rogers put forward a whole series. I only grabbed two of those, because others are coming forward as far as future agenda items. But the first is the Flight of Fright Trick-or-Treat Candy Event, the second event to be held at the airport on Halloween in this regard. She indicates that the, the line were four people wide and stretched for thousands, thousands of feet and didn't relent for two and a half hours as families went from airplane to helicopter to gyrocopters to jets, getting candy from the pilots. Community benefit event brought an estimated 5,000 people to the airport. Costumes were wonderful, and the spirit and positivity was incredible. It was heartwarming to see children just as excited about being near airplanes and pilots as receiving candy. About 1,500 pounds of candy was handed out generously donated by the airport businesses and pilots, and they are going to continue to make this an annual event, but I had to share this picture.
Uh-huh. Oh, that's cute.
The little Ghostbuster here. I don't know if I should be more excited about this Ghostbuster kid or the turbocharged De Havilland Beaver on amphibious floats. I don't know which, but I thought it was a pretty exciting picture.
Ghostbusters must, must, Ghostbusters must be big this year, because my one-year-old grandson was a Ghostbuster. I didn't even know what it was when I saw it, so...
There's a new Ghostbuster movie coming out.
Oh, is that one?
Where they actually, they end, they end up le, like letting the ghosts out of the containment system.
Ah, she's adorable.
Yeah, she is cute.
I didn't know what the Ghostbuster was, but I know what the airplane was. There it is, so. All right, and then the Airport Terminal Building and the South Sanford Fire Station that received a significant emphasis on significant hail damage back in 2020 when we had that crazy storm that came through here. It's been a $550,000 insurance claim. Restore Masters have, are just now finishing up. They put new roofs on both buildings. Some, some of the siding, major siding elements on the storm-facing sides had to be replaced, several windows, garage doors and such under that, and they're repainting trim and all of those elements. So, that work is just about complete. Gosh, it, it destroyed, any plane sitting outside on the tarmac was, was physically destroyed. It crashed through a couple of the hangar walls and destroyed planes inside. I've never, I've never seen anything like it in my lifetime. I mean, that happened around nine o'clock in the morning, went down to six o'clock at night, and there still were drifts, piles of, of hailstones where the water had pushed it into the ravines and such. Then the last element is the 2022 Committee Openings. So, on the city's website via the link here, you can find the committee openings that are open for the various committees in the city. This is a cut from the city's website. This is what you'll see. You'll see the deadline for application. It's Friday, December seventeenth by 4:00 P. M. You click on the committee openings, you'll have the attachment that I have here, and it has the committee descriptions by PDF, and there's an application that you can fill out right there online and submit it to the city, and there's instructions in there on how to do that. So, we have three openings for the Airport Advisory Committee, and there's a description of the candidates that they're looking for there. So, it asks you to submit your, your request for each of these committees and put your qualifications in as my best match for a particular future appointment to any of these committees. Budget Committee's looking for the typical four persons from the public to round out the Budget Committee, which also has three members of the City Council. We're looking for one person for a three-year term to the Board of Appeals. Here's administrative and dimensional variance hearings. We have five openings for the Board of Assessment and Review, because all of those were coming up at the same time it was created, the five members who were appointed, excuse me, and their terms are all up at the same time. Point, we should look at getting those to be staggered. Planning Board has one three-year term opening available for this cycle. Design Review Committee has two openings. Plan Bank has one open for a five-year term. The Sanford Housing Authority has two openings for a three-year term. One opening is for a tenant representative, and one opening is for a member-at-large. Further contact information, information in here, you can contact Larissa at three two four nine one seven three to answer any questions or assist you in the process of making an application. Thank you.
Steve, can people apply online, or do they have to download a paper copy, fill it out, and send it in?
I think they download the PDF. I don't know, Larissa, if it's a fillable PDF or not. I don't believe that it is yet.
It is not yet a fillable PDF.
Right.
Yeah.
They'd have to fill that out and mail it in.
It would be nice if we could get that online. I mean, honestly, I think that we're at that point where it'd be nice for things like that. So, that's a discussion for later. Councilor Hanselman, you have your hand up?
Thank you. Actually, sorry, it's from a earlier item, Steve, but with the tractor that's been, you know, taken back essentially, have we already replaced that, or will you, will we be seeing a replacement coming forward, or will we be short one this coming winter? I'm just curious in that, that piece of it.
We, we have replaced that. So, we, we have purchased three new sidewalk units of a different make, trying those out this time. The MV five, the, the funds for that will be brought back in and worked into the capital program request for this doing year. The funds will be brought back into the Fleet Management Program, and any utilization for the, for which will, will be at the authorization of the council.
Thank you.
Do any other councilors have any questions for the City Manager? Don't see any hands up? Thank you, Steve. Communications and Presentations, twenty-one dash five two one, five two five dash zero one, Presentation of Certified Election Results from the November second, 2021 election, and I think Sue Cody's here to present this.
Yes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can't see you.
I thought I had my camera on, but I didn't. I don't know what I did wrong. I'm sorry.
That's okay. You go ahead.
Hey, um...
And Sue, what, what would you like, if anything, for materials?
Um, if you want to do the second document that I had sent this morning, or this afternoon to Larissa, the timeline that just shows everything before I go over the results. Yes, that there. Thank you. So, this, I just kind of put together a timeline of, from when we initially received our city ballots on September twentieth. We proofread and verified the count, and we held off on doing our major mailing until receiving the state ballots to avoid double postage. In the interim, a week later, I was able to download the list of overseas and uniformed service people that the state had sent ballots out to, so I mailed our city ballot to those 42 people. Then a couple days later, received the state ballots, proofread them, and got the staff together to mail out 250 that had been requested from the start that the request could be made on August third. And then opened up the following Monday, October fourth, to the in-person voting at City Hall. And as you can see, the 250 ballots that we sent out that first Monday, we received 22 back in the drop box behind City Hall, which was a little bit exciting. It's always nice to know that the system works full circle. I have there the totals for the month from October fourth, when we first started, up into Election Day. Total in-person voters, voters taking ballots home are voters that came in, completed an application and took a ballot home for themselves and the family member. In-person registrations, we had some new voter registrations, first-time voters, and also a lot of name and address changes that got updated, so that's always good to do in the off-election years, to have current information handy for the following next year, of course, with the gubernatorial election. Total ballots that were sent out to voters, 616. That includes telephone requests, mail-in requests, and electronic requests. Out of those 616 that were mailed out, 601 were returned in the drop box. 300, or just about 300, were returned by the regular postal mail. And the rest of the page, it's just a breakdown day by day of the total numbers for the whole month. It did start off quite slow with the in-person voters, but that also allowed us to get refreshed with the system. My workers that helped out last year came back this year to help out again and get a little refresher course of the process of doing the things in the computer. And also, there were a lot of mail-in applications that were done by the people behind Question One, so a lot of those applications being mailed in for ballots to be sent to them. I was able to take the workload from the girls down in the clerk's office, because they were busy with, you know, registrations and other clerk business, so we took the bulk of those requests and did it upstairs in the council chambers, which was nice for the girls in the office and good practice for my workers as well, which did a terrific job, I think. And you have the official results. I'm pretty happy with the turnout, 29% not bad for non-candidate statewide election. I did go back, I think, as far as 2011, the off-years, it, it's been running between 18 and 28%, so consider it a, a decent turnout for, I guess, a non-candidate election. I do believe Question One did kick up a lot of interest for voters. So, you can see there, in Sanford, we voted yes on all three of these state referendum See, that's statewide, same thing. For our local ballot, which I was quite excited to have races and four out of the five contests on the ballot, we had our city council race, and congratulations to Ann Hanselman for being reelected, and also to Becky Brink for being elected. And I will be doing the formal mailing of the notification of that with instructions for swearing in in January on those. For the school committee, we had two candidates for the one seat. Those raised there, but congratulations to Jennifer Davey for winning. The trustee for the Water District, one seat there, and I had three candidates. I think that was the first time ever. Congratulations to the... Congratulations to the incumbent there, John Koshen, for being re-elected and of course, the trustee on the Sewer District, no, no contest there, just Paul Demers being re-elected. I did have a brief phone call yesterday with Sean Sullivan, who was going to be doing the story, I think, for this week's paper, um, where Becky Brink and Ann were both re-elected. He believes this is the first time that we have a majority of the City Council as being women. I believe he is correct. I did not have the time to go through and look. I remember, I believe it was back when we were still Selectmen or Town Council, that we did have a few women on the board at one time, but not the majority of the membership, I don't believe. So he was reaching out to Harlan Eastman to see if he could get that confirmed or not. And I told him, you know, if he wasn't able to the, he could reach back out to me, but oh, see what he has for his story there and end of the week. What I have.
Thank you, Sue. Um, I have a question for you and, and I'm going to bring it up because it, um, there was a lot of discussion on social media about, um, where people could put signs. So my request for the next election, especially since it will be a probably well-attended and maybe some, a lot of candidates, because there will be a, um, a state, there will be state ballots on there, um, that we have a one-page, um, map or a explanation of where we, where, where signs may not be put. In other words, it, for me, it's more, it was harder for me to explain to people where they, um, shouldn't put a sign. And especially since state law changed in the last couple of years, for some of us, that was, um, new. And, and I'll be honest, I had forgotten that I actually voted for state statute that said you couldn't put it in, um, rotaries. And in fact, last, uh, election in twenty, uh, twenty, there were lots of signs in the roundabouts. And this year, it was, it was really clear that they couldn't be in roundabouts or within certain intersections. So I guess, I've spoken to Steve about it and I think it's something that we can definitely do, to have plenty of time to do it, but I think it would be really helpful to the candidates because no matter how many times somebody runs for office, it can be difficult to remember all of those. So I think one pager that just says where you can't put it would be much more helpful than where you may put it. Um, I see one hand up from Councilor Stackpole, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to relay my, uh, my family's voting experience, my wife and I. Uh, I mean, we just, uh, it was very, very simple and I, I say this for everybody listening and also for Sue for some feedback. Uh, I got an email, I clicked the link, took me to a state website where I entered information about both my wife and I. We got them in like, the ballots in like, three days in the mail, if not sooner, they, they seemed to come right along. We sat down at our table, took out some blue pens, uh, filled the things out and I drove them down and dropped them into the drop box. It couldn't have been more simple, uh, to do. So, uh, you know, no lines, no nothing, it was, it was very quick and very easy. So thank you for the quick, uh, and smooth process, Sue. It, uh, it's working very well, at least from what I can see.
Thank you. Let it went smoothly for you.
Okay, I see Matt Hill's hand up.
Thank you. Um, so the, uh, one or two-page summary that you mentioned was generated by Steve Landry, Maine DOT State Traffic Engineer. And I believe, uh, Sue Cody did, uh, provide that to candidates, uh, and I, I believe most of them did adhere very strictly to it. And we have been enforcing recently, uh, no signs posted on utility polls and no signs within the roundabout. Hopefully, we're going to continue that.
Thank you. I, I'm just saying that when you get a, you know, fifty pages of stuff and it's the first time you've ever run for office, it can be really confusing to get through it all and find that one spot. And sometimes, I mean, I got a couple of, of text messages and emails asking me and even I had to look back and say, well, I, I don't think you can put it there, but, um, but check it. I just think it, it would be much more helpful to look at, you may not put it in the roundabout, you may not put, I mean, it's just better than trying to sort through everything. It seemed to be the biggest issue for people. I'm not saying that you didn't, Sue, it's just really difficult when you've got a new candidate and then blaming and accusing other people who they thought should have known better. You know what? It can be difficult. It can be difficult to remember that every two years, if, if you're only on the ballot or every three years. I'm just saying that I would love to have something that I could, I could have linked to. As it was, I linked to the map that showed how you couldn't be, you know, the, the ones that were very clear about where you may not post, put a, a sign on public, the public way that's too close to a voting place. But for, we had a number of people who had never run for office before. And I guess I just, I mean, I, I thought it was unhelpful, the discussion on, on social media, and I just think that I'd like to get ahead of it for next November, that's all.
I wish the people that were struggling on social media would have reached out to me and I could have helped them. I did have a couple, that did. Um, and I did share that information and it was fairly new to me as well. And I did highlight on there that the, um, utility polls and roundabouts were off limits for political signs, which was new for everybody, I think, that was going to be placing signs. And I said, you know, if you have any questions, give me a call.
Sue, I don't, I don't think you're to blame necessarily.
No, I'm not blaming you.
I think the state stuff is fairly poorly written. It would be nice to have a kind of a cheater sheet that's simple, um, for our community so that instead of just, just giving that more complicated, very verbose description, you can give a simple, you know, bulleted, no roundabouts, no this, no this, no that, you know what I mean? It would be nice to have something like that, um, because I think that was the problem. It was so verbose, it was so much words, 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 and it wasn't really just cut and dry, which is, which is typical of, um, when you're just kind of cutting and pasting a law, so.
And I don't, I didn't have the full legislative document. I just had the two-page document that was provided from the Department of Transportation.
Right, that's why I'm not blaming you. It's poorly written and it's not your fault.
And I would hope that next year, with it being, you know, state offices, Senate and legislative and county offices that are, candidates are getting their paperwork from the state of Maine, that the Secretary of State would offer those resources to candidates.
I, I just, Sue, for us, for me, it's, it's about our community and if anything that we can do that helps makes it easier. I do think there were people who were posting on social media and it wasn't about whether they thought it was right or not, they just wanted to, um, create chaos. So, um, Councilor Hanselman, uh, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention very briefly that I appreciate Sue's communication. I, uh, was a candidate, obviously, I read the packet and then I just had a complete blank of what I was doing when I was out planting signs and like I did several years ago, I put them up in the roundabout. So I caused some of the confusion, I just want to officially apologize for that. Um, I did remedy it as quickly as I could, but I don't necessarily think that that document is confusing, um, necessarily, but I love the idea of a really easy-to-use map and I'd even be willing to help create that in like a Google Map type format, um, just because it'd be a really useful resource and we could clearly make red areas. It doesn't even just be in like a, it doesn't have to be like a overlay or anything complicated, it could be literally a Google Map that just says, here's where you can't put them up for, for new folks. But, um, I just wanted to apologize for, for my part in the mess, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hanselman. Anybody else have any other comments or any questions for Sue Cody?
I just, I just noted that we had, uh, twenty percent of our ballots were cast by absentee at eight hundred and ninety-nine. Um, just under five percent of the people voted in-person early here at City Hall. And I'm really impressed with the, the continued, uh, effectiveness of the ballot drop box, you know, over six hundred ballots utilized in, in the drop box. So very, very good additions, some of the positive things that have come out of COVID, if there is such a thing.
Yes, I agree, Sue, thank you. Do you have anything else, Sue, that you wanted to add?
I can't think of anything, just thank you for letting me use the council chambers.
Okay, well.
And hopefully I'll be there next year.
Right, all right, thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Okay, next, um, on the agenda is public participation. Okay, I see one hand up for public participation and I'm hoping this is from items that are not on the agenda. Uh, Lee Burnett.
Good evening.
Can we stop the sharing, um, Steve, please? Can I just, so I can see everybody? Thank you. Go ahead, Lee, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, okay, thanks. I just wanted to bring something to your attention. Um, um, I'm here tonight, um, representing Cycle Sanford. Just in the interest of brevity, I thought I'd just read this, um, instead of, um, laboring through, trying to verbalize everything all at once. Yeah, I'm disappointed the council, um, allowed no discussion in, uh, sending the rail trail report back to the Trails Committee. I feel like the report deserves discussion and deserves a, a council vote. First, I want to give kudos to Dave Parent and the whole Rail Trail Advisory Committee. They took on a thankless task and produced a, a great impressive document under deadline conditions and I really appreciate all the impressive list of, uh, improvements, necessary improvements. But even more than a list of improvements, I feel like what the rail trail needs is a, is a vision and, uh, the political will from the council to make it happen. And, and this requires more than, more than just getting more grant money and tinkering with the composition of the Trails Committee. I feel that's the status quo and it's, it's not working. This was really made clear to me, um, last year. The Trails Committee worked out a very good compromise on the most, um, contested section of the rail trail between Pleasant Street and Malsum Street. It was a combination of things, traffic calming measures and pavement, just a small quarter-mile section of trail. We had buy-in from everybody, neighbors, the ATV club, Trails Committee, Police Department was involved, City Counselor was there, Joe Hanslip, Bicycle Coalition of Maine. And on top of all that, we had the State ATV Coordinator pledge a significant chunk of money towards the, the local match for this grant. It went to Augusta and it was torpedoed. And I called up, tried to find what, what happened. There was a lot of finger pointing about who was to blame, but it came down to the fact that nobody at the state level wanted to make the necessary investment to make that stretch of rail trail work. And I want to repeat that, nobody wanted to make the necessary investments. So where do we go? I feel like we need a reality check on the rail trail. I feel like it's not a multipurpose trail, it's an ATV highway that others use with varying degrees of inconvenience and hazard. And this is what we get when there's not a vision for the rail trail. The dominant users dominate and it happens every multipurpose trail I've seen, it's always the same. I'm a bike rider and I've never been able to rail, ride the rail trail except for a few short stretches. I've lived here for forty years, I feel like it's time to make the improvements that we need. I feel like the City Council should embrace a true multipurpose vision for the rail trail. Look around at what other communities are doing, the Eastern Trail, Andrew Scoggan River Trail, Kennebec River Trail. These are the kinds of trails that see the most use and generate the most economic, the impact for their communities. These are the kind of trails that we should aspire to. It's going to require a much, much higher standard of maintenance the rail trail has ever seen and it's going to require better management of the conflicts and it's going to require education, like at the state level, they don't, they don't understand what we need to do to make a real, a true multipurpose trail work. But if we do this investment, we're going to get a lot, we're going to get full integration of the rail trail and the Malsum Way, we're going to get activated business opportunities, Shaw's Ridge Downtown, eventually Route Four, connectivity throughout town and a real draw for tourism, which maybe we'll even get a brew pub that we've been talking about. If the council chooses to adopt a vision, Cycle Sanford has a lot of practical measures for implementing it. But if the council chooses not to, I feel like we should just rename it ATV Highway and put up some warning signs for everybody else that beware. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, thank you, Lee, for those comments. Um, any, let's see, Diane Connelly, I see your hand up, um.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
I can.
Um, this comment is not towards the police stations, more to the grant writer and the City Council as a whole. I've requested, um, in writing, uh, in an email, to have the speed, uh, display unit on Railroad Avenue, we have not seen it. We've had three pets in the neighborhood that have been killed because of high speed of what's going on in the road and we all knew it was going to happen when it got paved, but we need some help over here. It's just getting unbelievably crazy with speeds, drag racing, burnouts, you name it, and everyone's getting really picked off. If we could have some better grant money to help the Police Department to do these, uh, speed enforcement, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Uh, is there anybody else to speak under public comment or items that are not on the agenda? I do not see any other hands. I will go on to public hearings. The City Council will take public comment on the following. Twenty-one dash five one five dash zero one, a public hearing on ordinance amending the City Code, Chapter one one six, electrical standards to maintain conformity with the state's adopted electrical code, the National Electric Code twenty twenty edition. And before we, we begin, we have three, uh, public hearings this evening and I just want to remind councilors that the purpose of the public hearing is to hear from the public relating to whatever the topic is. For councilors, they may ask clarifying questions, but our discussion will occur under the agenda item. So we won't be having any back and forth, but if you have a question of somebody who is commenting under public comment, please raise your hand and I will call on you for clarifying questions. So the first, um, I think Ian is presenting on this, am I correct, Steve? Up, I see Ian there, okay, go ahead, Ian. Um, I will open the public hearing and Ian Howseal for the, for Sanford will, will present and then we will hear from those in favor. Go ahead, Ian.
Yes, Mayor and City Councilors, Ian Howseal, Director of Community Development. Um, I'm bringing this forward. These are changes, uh, proposed to, um, the city's code, um, based on, um, recent amendments, uh, at a state level to the electrical code. So it's really just to remain in conformance, um, with the, um, uh, state, state adopted standards. Um, the city has an electrical inspector, it's actually working out, um, extremely well, we've had one for about, uh, four years now. And, um, this really is just maintaining, um, consistency with the requirements at a state level to avoid any confusion for, um, electricians, um, working in the city versus elsewhere. Um, it's, it's, there's not really many fireworks, um, here in these changes, um, they've really been, um, um, just adopted and, and, and in, in use consistently. So I can leave my comments at that.
Thank you, Ian. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Don't see any hands. Uh, anyone to speak against? Don't see any hands. Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash five-two-one dash zero-one, a public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 245 of the Sanford City Ordinance pertaining to unlawful parking and impoundment. And I think Chief Anderson is going to present the city's side of the ordinance for this. Chief Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'll just declare the public hearing open. Go ahead, Chief Anderson.
Essentially, this is an update to the existing unlawful parking, Chapter 245 of the City Code. And we've added a couple of items into this to allow or to restrict commercial vehicles from parking on city ways in publicly owned or city-owned or controlled property overnight as well as not allowing for people to live in their vehicles in city-owned or controlled parking lots or property. We added a section to define what a motor vehicle was. We wanted to define what overnight parking would be as well as kind of have some parameters. The initial spirit of this parking enforcement has not changed from the original. We just added these two sections to control the size of commercial vehicles and again, to restrict the overnight parking.
Okay, thank you, Chief Anderson. Anyone to speak in favor? I don't see any hands, but I have something that, an email that, oh, I see Matt Hill. Just one second, Matt. I'm going to read into the record from Tina Hopp. "I would like to voice my opinion about the parking issues in the city of Sanford. I am the owner of Little World Two, the childcare center at 15 West Elm Street. We share the parking lot with the children's dentistry. Our neighbor across the street owns an RV trailer that he decides to park on our side of the road. There is space in front of his own house, 10 West Elm Street, as well as in his driveway. Apparently, he has told the dentist that there are more trailers to come in the future. For two businesses that just have enough parking spaces for their clients and employees, it is hard to have a large RV trailer parked there as well. It is a blind spot for drivers and the school bus passes there every day, twice a day. It is a liability. I had to jump through hoops to be able to get parking approved by the city of Sanford when I decided to open Little World Two two years ago. So it is quite frustrating to see that someone is just able to park a large RV trailer right on the road, not even on their own side of their house. I hope this concern will be considered when it comes to decision-making about parking issues in the city of Sanford." So I would say that this is a letter in favor of the ordinance that we are considering this evening for a first reading. Matt Hill?
Thank you. Yes, I support the language as proposed. This week, the Public Works Department has already received another separate complaint about a kind of similar incident on street parking. And just having really anything on the books, allowing the Police Department to do enforcement would be great in this situation. I believe they will use that responsibly and as needed to get the situations safe.
Anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-one dash five-two-three dash zero-one, a public hearing on a proposed zoning text and zoning map amendments associated with Townhouse Solar Proposal on Hanson Ridge Road. I will declare the public hearing open with the reminder to the council, this is a public hearing and it is a proposed zoning text and zoning map amendment, not the project. And I think that Beth is going to speak first for the project, I mean for the zoning changes. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. Good evening. Beth Delavalle, Planning Director. By way of introduction, I wanted to indicate that the Planning Board has worked on this project, both the zoning text and map change as well as the site plan. At its October 6th, 2021 meeting, it voted four to two to recommend the proposed zoning text and map amendment. What they would do is to create a new residential development overlay zone and it would amend the zoning map to designate this new overlay zone on lots L-25-33, L-24-6, R-8-69A and R-8-69. And we did provide a map that describes that area as well as the draft zoning amendment themselves. What the amendments are in particular are a condition of approval for the major site plan and the conditional use for permits that were also granted four to two at that same meeting to approve the major site plan, as I said, and the conditional use so that developers could construct just under a five-megawatt solar facility on the property that is owned by Townhouse Properties. That is one of those parcels and a portion of the second parcel that I described. They're located near 104 Hanson Ridge Road. I did want to point out that the Planning Board did hold a public hearing, actually two, on this project. And the first one was September 1st and the second one was October 6th. One person spoke in favor of the project. Eight people spoke in opposition to the project and one person, who is a Planning Board member, who recused himself from the review and discussion of the project, spoke, because he's in a butter to the project, spoke neither for nor against the project and did raise questions for the Planning Board to consider. In my report to you, I've laid out the various issues that were presented. And as you can see, as you read through those issues, oftentimes there was a position for and a position against the very same topics. I will say that based upon the specifics that were raised, not about the zoning, but about the site plan, that the Planning Board and the developer was quite responsive and making modifications to the site plan. I don't want to go into that too deeply because this is still an open application. I presented a bunch of background information and I think one thing to take into consideration here, well, two things. The first is that one of the Planning Board members felt very strongly in opposition to the project, wrote a memo that expressed his interpretation of the comprehensive plan is not supporting this zone change. That was in contradiction to the memo that I put together for the board that actually did suggest that there was support for the zone change. I say that because I want to be perfectly clear and above board about this. And that particular Planning Board member's memo is in your packet. And I think the other thing that I wanted to make perfectly clear is that this site is very, very highly constrained from a physical perspective. It's got a significant amount of change in topography, ledge outcroppings, vernal pools, wetlands, and it would be, and the requirement that public sewer and water must be extended to the properties to support a medium-density pattern of development, similar to what you see on the right-hand side of the blue area that's in front of you. And several years ago, 2017, a number of department staff, sewer, from Sewer Department, excuse me, Sewer District, Water District, Public Works and the Planning Department spent a number of months going over the various residential development designations in the city. There were eight at the time. And this was the lowest in an informal ranking in terms of feasibility to be able to actually support the compact pattern of development that was intended for the zone. The zone change itself says that if in fact you can demonstrate that the environmental constraints on the site create unreasonable economic limitations on developing for medium-density development, if you can demonstrate that to the satisfaction of the Planning Board as well as meeting a number of other additional conditions, including providing sensitivity to the solar farm being adjacent to residential development, not just the zones. Sometimes it's just a zone. Sometimes it is actual residential development. So those are the two criteria that would have to be demonstrated before an applicant could propose a solar project in this area. I think that's pretty much all I have to say, but I'm very happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions, clarifying questions for the Planning Director? I do not see any hands up. Is there anyone else? Oh, Beth, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, the one other thing I wanted to indicate is that the Planning Board Chair, Lenny Horr, is here in the audience this evening and you certainly can ask him any questions about the process as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else? Is there anyone to speak against? I don't see any hands. I will be corrected if anyone else sees any. Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. There is nothing under the consent agenda? Old business. Twenty-one dash five-one-eight dash zero-one, confirm the findings in order of judging 1 John Street to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859 at the hearing held on October 19th, 2021 and authorize the city manager to sign the findings in order for the city council and have the city clerk record it in the registry of deeds and advertise it or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Martell. And I will just say to all the councilors that even if you were not at that October meeting, you may vote for this item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Tuttle is absent with notice. Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Counselor Lanigan is absent with notice. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-one dash five-one-nine dash zero-one, confirm the findings in order of judging 21 Butler Street to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859 at the hearing held on October 19th, 2021 and authorize the city manager to sign the findings in order for the city council and have the city clerk record it in the registry of deeds and advertise or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move, we approve.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Hanselman. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-one dash five-two-zero dash zero-one, confirm the findings in order of judging 38 Jackson Street to be a dangerous building and a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSA Sections 2851 to 2859 at the hearing held on October 19th, 2021 and authorize the city manager to sign the findings in order for the city council and have the city clerk record it in the registry of deeds and advertise or serve it upon the owner and parties in interest as required by law. Should I have a motion to approve?
Move, we approve.
I'll second that.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole and a second by Counselor Hanselman. Any discussion? Seeing none, Counselor Martell?
May I interrupt? Sorry?
Oh, yes, you may. Go ahead, Ian, before we vote.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure it was included in the record that the owner of this property did contact the Code Enforcement Office and said that they had tried to attend the meeting, but was unable to. It was relayed to them that if there's any more information related to this property that needed to be brought forward to the city council, that they should do so at this meeting or before. I have not heard anything back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion by the council necessary? And I will call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Thank you. New business. Twenty-one dash five-two-one, five-one-two dash zero-one, order to accept the bid from Freedom Air Mechanical Sanford for a ductless split air conditioning system for City Hall in the amount of $12,750.50. The funding for this system is provided for in the City Hall and Annex CIP account. Alex will present and then I'll ask for a motion. I do see you here, Alex, so I'm assuming you're going to do this. Alex?
Yes. Yes, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine.
Okay, great. So this project is to provide redundant cooling systems for the server room and switch room. The systems in there right now are sole standing systems and they're aging to a degree where I'm not confident that they will continue running all of the time. So by putting in the redundant systems, it reduces the amount of stress that we have on the equipment that are in those rooms, the computer equipment. Basically, we published this bid on the city website on October 1st. And on that date, I also contacted four contractors that the city uses regularly for HVAC-type work. And I know that it was also picked up by the Dodge Report. We held a pre-bid meeting on October 12th. Three of the four companies that I contacted participated in that pre-bid meeting where we reviewed the work that was to be done. All three submitted bids, which are the bids that you're looking at here. The low bidder was Freedom Air Mechanical at $12,750.50, excluding the tax that they had originally included in their bid. The equipment that they bid is the same equipment essentially as what Patriot Mechanical bid. And that's Mitsubishi equipment, which is one of the top quality equipment of this type. So I'm pleased to recommend that we adopt this or award this bid to Freedom Air Mechanical, an outfit that's right here in Sanford and a person that I've worked with in the past and has done very great work for us here at the city, so.
Thank you, Alex. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Move, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole and there's a second by Counselor Martell. I just want to say that I'm always happy to approve a bid for a local company. So yeah, I support this wholeheartedly. Any other discussion by the council?
I just want to just point out, I know Alex knows this, but heat is probably the biggest enemy of your electronic devices, whether it's in your house or your phone or whatever. And what happens is when equipment like servers run excessively hot, the components wear out much faster. So this is a kind of pay me now or pay me later kind of scenario that you need to keep the ventilation and temperature at the appropriate level or your servers wear out, which are probably way more expensive than the $12,700 that's listed here.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Any other discussion by the council? Have a motion on the floor. And a second, I will call the roll. Seeing no further discussion, Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is unanimous of all those present. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you very much.
Twenty-one dash five-one-three dash zero-one. A proclamation naming November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, Small Business Saturday in Sanford. I will read the proclamation. Small Business Saturday Proclamation, November ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Whereas the government of Sanford, Maine celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-one point seven million small businesses in the United States. They represent ninety-nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for sixty-five point one percent of new net jobs created from two thousand to two thousand nineteen. And whereas small businesses employ forty-seven point one percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, eighty-eight percent of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic, and ninety-two percent of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas ninety-seven percent of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, eighty-five percent of them also encourage friends and family to do so too. And whereas fifty-six percent of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in twenty-twenty, and more than fifty percent of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed the local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation. And whereas Sanford, Maine supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Sanford, Maine does hereby proclaim November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year on behalf of the city council of the city of Sanford and the village of Springvale. And I think we all like to shop, and I like to shop locally, so. Go for it, everybody. Any comments from councillor? Councillor Stackpole has his hand up. You're muted.
Got my hand up, but I didn't get the mute taken off. I just, I just think this is a great example. It's not Sanford-related, but in the Newfield area, where I own some property, they have something they're doing this weekend called the Snowflake Trail. And there's a bunch of small business people that have gotten together, and they have a special weekend because it starts on Veterans Day, Thursday, and goes Friday and Saturday. This is not a promotion for it. If you want more information, you can just Google it. But they get together and they create a map that takes you to all the businesses. It's quite rural out here. Takes you to all the businesses. They have selfie contests and other things that they do in order to promote the local businesses. Now, my family's own property out here since I was born, so that's almost sixty-eight years ago. There's businesses out here I didn't even know were here that I learned were here through the Snowflake Trail. So I think it's a great model, so I'm praising the model. I'm sure there probably are people in Sanford that are looking at something similar, where you have a weekend and, you know, join together a lot of small businesses and run contests and promotions and things like that. But I'm all in on small business. I think that's the future particularly of Sanford. And so I just wanted to mention that. And if anybody's interested, just Google Snowflake Trail and you'll see what I'm talking about.
Thank you, councillor Stackpole. And I think I will look for a motion to approve.
I will unmute and move we approve.
Thank you, councillor Stackpole. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second from councillor Hanselman. Any further discussion? Then I will call the roll. Councillor Martell?
Yes.
Councillor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councillor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-one dash five-one-four dash zero-one. Ordained amendments to the City Code, Chapter one-one-six Electrical Standards to maintain conformity with the state's adopted electrical code, the National Electrical Code twenty-twenty edition. This item must be read at two separate meetings. This is a first reading. We do not need a motion. So any discussion or questions for Beth? Was it Beth that presented or Ian? Ian was the one who presented on this.
Ian, yes.
Ian, any discussions or any comments from councillors? Seems like a pretty standard issue thing. Councillor Martell?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I noticed that the Board of Appeals section looks like it's redlined out. Is that, is that appeal process going away or is something changing there? Can you maybe go over that a little bit?
No, that was very much housekeeping. It's not going away. It's still the Board of Appeals. It's just best practice when you can build in the definition into the regulation itself rather than relying upon the definition. So both the Board and the city were extra, so to say. So it was easy enough to write it out and adjust it in the regulation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from councillors or comments? Seeing none? We will see that in two weeks. Twenty-one dash four-nine-four dash zero-one. First reading of a proposed zoning text and zoning map amendments associated with Town Hall Solar proposal on Hanson Ridge Road. And once again, just a reminder, this is not about the project. This is about the zoning text and zoning map. And I will note that councillor, Deputy Mayor Hurley is recusing herself from this discussion. Councillor Stackpole, I see your hand up.
Yeah, just quickly, I just want everybody to know that this came out of the zoning subcommittee with unanimous approval to move forward to the council.
Thank you, councillor Stackpole. Councillor Hanselman?
Thank you. I just want to mention that I, you know, I don't take lightly. I think it's important to note that there weren't dissenting or some votes not in agreement at the planning board level, and I didn't take that lightly personally. And I was appreciative of the memo that was put together to really explain that stance, as well as how it was reported at the meeting. But I think that when we think about the rural development zones, and we discussed this a little bit previously at zoning subcommittee, but as Beth mentioned, this particular property, when we look at its eligibility to actually be developed, is so limited that that piece is one piece that for me is really important. The other is that we all recognize as a council that we're in the midst of updating or working hard to get towards a new and updated comprehensive plan. And we recognize, I believe, that there will definitely be inclusion of solar in that new comprehensive plan. So I think that's important to mention. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanselman. Did anybody else have any other questions? And Beth, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, we will see. Councillor Hanselman, is your hand up again, or did you just forget to take it down? Okay. Steve, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, I think it's been a very good and extensive process for the consideration. There's been a lot of consideration put into those parcels because of the economic analysis and the geographic limitations and all host of limitations on that. So I too support this action going forward. I'd like to see this get approved at the subsequent read, move that textual change forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, seeing no further discussion, then we will look forward to seeing this for its second reading in two weeks.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Oh, sorry, did somebody have their hand up?
No, I just, this is chat to bother you, Senator. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Oh, okay, thanks. Okay. Okay, twenty-one dash four-eight-two dash zero-one. First reading of proposed amendment to Chapter two-four-five of the Sanford City ordinances pertaining to vehicles and traffic, unlawful parking. We will not have a motion on this because it is a first reading, but are there questions from the council? And I will also say that this came from the subcommittee, Public Safety. We had numerous discussions of other pieces that didn't really fit the bill for us, and I think that we're satisfied that this will address the issues, the complaints that we've been getting. Other councillors have comments or questions? Councillor Hanselman?
Well, I just want to be really clear that I don't believe that these proposed amendments would address a concern that was read into the record earlier, Madam Mayor, in relation to Elm Street and concerns about an RV at that location. So when we talk about that particular instance, I guess I'd be looking towards, you know, our police department, looking into whether that vehicle was actually obstructing, you know, rights of way or causing a safety issue because of lack of visibility or some other issue. I don't believe that would actually fall within this particular ordinance as it stands right now. Unless I'm, I don't know if anybody else sees it differently, but.
Yeah. Well, I thought that I had asked, when I got this email, I was pretty sure it would. But Chief Anderson, are you willing to comment on that?
Sure, I can, and I agree completely with councillor Hanselman. The proposed ordinance does not address anything that's not really a commercial vehicle or, you know, designed to sleep overnight or somebody sleeping overnight in the vehicle. We, I think the Public Safety Committee kind of steered away from boats, boat trailers, landscaping trailers, campers, RVs, that whole end of the spectrum. And it didn't seem like we had a lot of support in the Public Safety Committee to include those in. So if it's up for more discussion, maybe it's something we should talk about back at the committee. And if it's not, go ahead.
But what about the fact that is the RV more than twenty feet?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't fit that because under A, if you look here at what Steve has up under A, it's only in parking areas prohibited in schedules five, six, and seven. And when you go into the city ordinances, five, six, and seven have to do with parking at a crosswalk, in twenty-minute parking areas, in thirty-minute parking areas, and it's generally for downtown, where they're looking at unloading and loading of commercial vehicles for deliveries for our downtown businesses. It doesn't address any other area in the city, regardless of length. And so if the vehicle, this case an RV, is properly registered and parked in what would constitute a legal parking spot for a car or a pickup truck, then we could do nothing about it. And kind of in addition to this, I did want to comment that under one-oh-six in poundment, we did add one section to these, to the suggested updates. And that was when a vehicle is parked in violation of twenty-four, two-four-five-one-one-three, that we can remove the vehicle. Because in the past, all we could do is put a ticket on it, and it could sit there for literally months with tickets stacking up, and we don't really have an avenue to address that. So really, the one-oh-six and one-thirteen kind of work hand in hand together with the enforcement action in one-one thirteen, one-oh-six, and then kind of the expanding on what we're allowed to address in one-thirteen.
Councillor Hanselman, you still have your hand up? So because I'm like concerned then, because I actually was hoping that what we had here would address that kind of habitual parking, especially in a way that impedes somebody leaving their driveway across the way that has a lot of traffic through it. Councillor Hanselman, you have?
Some of this is going to hinge upon the GVWR, the Gross Vehicle Weight as it's registered. It wouldn't take a very large motorized RV unit to hit that ten thousand pound GWR.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, councillor Hanselman.
Well, two things, but in response to C. Mayor Buck's comment, my concern, I guess, if that's the intent, which I personally don't know that I'm in support of an ordinance that would, and that's been the point of conversation, Public Safety, right, but that would reduce our ability to park recreational vehicles? Because that was one derivation that we looked at at Public Safety was in relation to recreational vehicles, which is now not part of this. But Section B there, I think, city manager is only relative to commercial vehicles. So I don't think that GVWR of ten thousand for an RV, which clearly from the email sounds like this would be a larger RV. I don't think it would apply still unless we changed it to include recreational vehicles over GVWR of ten thousand also.
Plates go by GVWR. They go by the Gross Vehicle Weight rating. That's what gets you into a commercial plate.
So RV would have a commercial plate?
Good for Gross Vehicle Weight, registered weight. If you're going by GVWR, it doesn't matter whether that vehicle has a commercial plate or not. The GWRW is going to be your trigger point.
Well, it's saying the commercial vehicle or commercial vehicle and combination with that weight or greater. So the two, the two qualifying things being commercial and having that weight, at least that's how I read it.
Well, I'm not sure, because I think the problem I see with this is that you have a pickup truck that's registered as a regular pickup truck, a personal vehicle, in a RV that's less than ten thousand pounds that maybe is more than twenty feet long, registered as a, as a trailer, a camper, and you hook them together and they're gonna be over ten thousand pounds, but they're not registered as a commercial vehicle. And they're gonna be, you know.
Right. Yeah, that's where we kind of get into some sticky areas.
I, we talked about this, you know, we talked about the boat on Storey Street. We talked about the tractor-trailer truck on Shawman. We talked about the vehicles that Mr. Hill had to deal with in Springvale. And so I get it. I do get it. You know, we don't want to impede citizens from being able to utilize their personally owned items, trailers for ATVs, or their camper, or their landscaping trailer that they want to park out on the street. But yes, it's going to cause some annoyance to some people. I think no matter what we do.
Okay, so I see a number of hands up, so let me just go through them as I saw them come up. Councillor Hanselman?
Thank you. I had a follow-up for chief in regards to an RV, if it is, or any vehicle. If a vehicle is causing a safety issue because somebody can't come out of their driveway or see, if it's obstructing a view significantly where it becomes a safety issue, do we have recourse at that point because it's a safety concern, regardless of what kind of vehicle it is?
Yeah, regardless. But those are very strictly worded in the motor vehicle statutes. One of the wording has to do with, has to be visibility and a passageway of, I think it's ten or twelve feet to get by. And it can't be parked, of course, within twenty feet of an intersection, and it can't block a driveway. But it doesn't say that, you know, if a person can leave their driveway, but they just have a hard time seeing around this vehicle, that doesn't account for that. You know what I mean? So there are some potential avenues to enforce a vehicle or ask it to be moved, or even move it if it violated state law. It's just really, there's not a lot of circumstances where that would fall into.
Matt Hill has his hand up.
Yeah, so the, I think the first version of this that was brought to the subcommittee was a lot more broad. I think it did kind of address some of the concerns that were raised tonight. And the direction we got at the subcommittee level was to kind of narrow it up. And the direction we got at the subcommittee level was to kind of narrow it up to get away from kind of touching everything that possibly could be out there for a situation and leaving it up for interpretation of the police department and get more specific that is the language you see here tonight. You know, again, and, uh, as Chief Anderson mentioned, this doesn't address like, you know, vehicles that have proper registration and license and everything, but are, you know, basically abandoned in place. Uh, we've had, we had one of those recently where it's just up on blocks or, uh, it's got, got four flat tires and hasn't moved for six months. You know, those, those are the type of things that there's, there's just nothing in our ordinance to say anything about it, but, but the direction we got at the subcommittee level was to tighten this up like this.
Jamie Cole.
Thank you. Uh, I was actually going to say what Matt Hill just said as well, but I just wanted to, um, correct the, the camper that's parked on West Elm Street is a camper. It's not an RV. It's a pull behind camper. I've also received that complaint. I've actually gone to their facility and utilized the driveways as intended. And I don't believe they would fall under the provisions that Chief Anderson just spoke about as far as being able to stop them from doing it. But that, that is a pull behind camper, not an RV.
Have you heard, Jamie, any kind of complaints from the, um, the school bus drivers trying to get down the street?
I have not.
Okay, Counselor Stackpole.
Yeah, I, uh, I'm kind of, uh, with Counselor Hanselman a little bit on this. You know, not being privy to the discussions at the subcommittee level. Uh, this, this is not a, a real straight up and down issue for me to say I, I approve it or I don't approve it. I, I mean, I, I understand, I think the, the issue is based on the conversation that I've heard here and the background that I have. But I, I really think a lot of, uh, of, uh, wording, uh, in this ordinance needs to be clarified. The other thing I would say, you know, if we're talking about essentially not allowing, uh, RV parking on our public street overnight, you know, people staying in their RVs, uh, parked on the side of the street. You know, I don't know how I feel about that, number one. So I don't know whether the, the, there needs to be a discussion at the council level on some of these specifics that can then provide some direction to the subcommittee, uh, people. And, and then we can get some clarification on this and move ahead.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Uh, I think this is the place where we kind of give direction to the subcommittee. Um, I'll just give an example. So we have a property on Shaw Street which has, um, a house on the corner and then an extensive lawn in front of it. And there, and the rest of the properties across the street are, you know, smaller urban lots. Um, because we set the other multifamily towards the back. And so it's, you know, it's a nice lawn in the front. And one of the things that used to happen, it's not happening now because it's been a change of ownership, but that used to drive me insane was that one of the properties had vehicles like that. They didn't park it in front of their property, blocking their view and, um, you know, or blocking their house. They put it across the street in front of my property, which, um, you know, it just made things look ugly. And then, you know, it just, I found it really irritating. I think there was one point there was a driver of a, you know, an eighteen-wheeler who would be there. And it's, it seems like if you're going to own all this stuff and you're going to put, or you're going to, you know, and you're going to put them into trailers and stuff, why should the trailers be in front of our property? Why shouldn't it be in front of their own property? So as the subcommittee is discussing this and looking what they are going to allow, what they aren't going to allow, you might want to consider maybe there's parameters. Maybe if you're going to park something on the street, it has to fit within the length of what you have for street frontage and no more. And it has to be in front of your house. So.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hurley. And you can see why, everyone, why it took us so long and how many iterations we went through this. So Steve, I guess, um, the direction I'm seeing is that it goes back to the subcommittee and we discuss further because I actually wanted to apply to that kind of parking in front of other people's property because I don't think it's right. So, um, what do you think?
So my, my continued concern, as this was being discussed in the past, i- is all about the utilization of the city streets. It's traffic capacity. It's parking for the primary, uh, conveyance vehicles, right? Um, that, that streets are there to accommodate and not becoming storage areas for people's RVs, trailers, storage units, all of that sort of deal. That is not the intent of the city streets. And as we have it now, it is not a tight enough definition to take care of. For example, we had a boat in the city's parking lot back here abandoned for several months. Uh, that we had to go through an extensive process to get that taken out of here. Uh, so I just see that no different than, than if that was on a city street. Uh, as far as taking care of people using the streets for storage capacity, that they just don't want it in their driveway, so they don't have enough capacity. So they need to find off-site locations to store that, not different than the overwhelming number of storage units that we see here or throughout the community that pay, people pay for that storage. Move such vehicles, boats, trailers and otherwise to those locations. So I would support, uh, broadening the definition, uh, to take into account those occurrences that we're seeing, uh, considerable abuse of on the city streets currently.
Okay, so we'll send it back to the subcommittee and try to, and have it on next week's, uh, subcommittee meeting. Uh, Counselor Hanselman, go ahead.
I, I just want to say that I'm concerned about getting consensus at the subcommittee level. Um, so we can talk about it and see the best move forward from there. But I have personally a real difficulty with the fact that we do have a significant member, members of our community that live in, uh, situations where they just don't have access to off-street parking. I recognize we don't want to, we want people to have the quiet enjoyment of their properties. And so you hate to have your view blocked by a RV or safety to me is obviously a very big issue. But, um, so I, the reason I like the ten thousand GVWR, if I have the initials correct, is that we're really addressing the extreme beatings that our streets take and the cost to the city at that level of repairs and maintenance that occurs when we have large commercial vehicles, uh, parked up, using our streets for that purpose. But we talk a boat on a trailer for somebody who doesn't have parking for it. Um, I love the concept of parking in front of their property, but then, you know, I live in a place that I have neighbors parking in front of my property and the only place to park is across the street. So, you know, I, I just, I, I'm not sure the best way to navigate this, but I just want to express concern based on Council Martell's comments at Public Safety and mine, that I don't know we'll get consensus at Public Safety. So just however we want to deal with that, maybe it's like a full council further conversation.
Well, I, I, I don't know, Steve, I guess I would still say send it back and see if there's something that you all can, can craft that maybe, I mean, we may just come back to the council and we'll see how, how it comes out at the, at the, um, at the vote on the second reading. And if there's a significant change to it, then we'll just have another public hearing on it. Okay?
Okay, we'll move it to subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, twenty-one dash five one zero dash zero one. Ordered to accept and approve the city financial report for the fourth quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And I think Ronnie Chatlin is here this evening to present.
Good evening. I'm pleased to offer. How are you?
Fine, thanks.
Good. I'm pleased to offer this financial report of city operations for your review. This report covers financial operations through the fourth quarter of the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. This report is intended to provide the city council and the community a general update on the financial activities and condition of the city on a quarterly basis. In addition to providing financial information, it provides a narrative on the financial highlights. Information contained in this report is preliminary and unaudited. Further adjusting entries may be made as part of the city's year-end close and audit process. It is prepared and reported on a budgetary basis. Please refer to the city's audited financial statements for a complete report on the city's financial activities and balances for the year. These reports are issued by December thirty-first following the end of each fiscal year. Audits can be found on the website under Finance, Available Reports. Again, this quarterly financial report provides an update for the last three months of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which is April through June. The revenue report, including real estate and personal property tax collections for the last quarter, closed at a hundred point two percent or a hundred and eight thousand more than the year-to-date revenue projection of eighty-nine million. This includes school revenue as well. The expense report closed with expenditures of twenty-nine point three million dollars or ninety-seven point six percent, which is just two point four percent under budget year-to-date. I've attached the five standard reports for your review. The year-to-date budget reports include the department budget, the report by org, object, revenue, and capital plan. Some of the areas that I'd like to bring to your attention tonight for the fourth quarter are as follows. On the expense side, the voter registration budget is only at fifty-four point three percent expended because, um, they received a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars center for tech and civic life grant. The treasurer and city clerk budget is over budget by eight point, um, eighty-seven hundred dollars due to the retirement buyout of our treasurer. General assistance is over budget by seventy thousand dollars of the non-contract services line. On the revenue side, we also collected sixty-nine thousand more than projected as we received seventy percent state reimbursement. Workers' compensation is over budget by a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. The premium increased effective January first due to our mod rate increasing from a dollar fifty-two to two thirty-nine. The increase in the experience mod is a reflection of the losses within the city, mainly the fire department and the police department. The Department of Public Works only expended ninety-three percent of their budget this year. They had a difficult time hiring and retaining staff. Recreation only expended sixty-one percent of their budget this year. Because of COVID, they ran less camps, therefore requiring less staff. And the majority of the savings you will see are in the part-time wages line. The part, the department expended eighty percent of their budget. Um, the majority that you'll see was not expended in the part-time wages. That was about forty-six thousand dollars. All budgets, in all budgets, we have seen a significant number of retirements and resignations this year. Projected buyout costs for retirements and resignations will be absorbed into the appropriate individual department. On the revenue side, automobile excise taxes, uh, we collected a hundred and sixty-five thousand more than projected. We originally budgeted, budgeted to collect four million dollars. State revenue sharing, we received two hundred and twenty thousand more than we budgeted and we projected to, to receive two point eight million dollars. Revenue sharing receipts to municipalities almost certainly will differ from projections as distributions are based upon actual tax revenue received and not on projected revenues. Ambulance fees overperformed by a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Building permits overperformed as well by forty-seven thousand. As you know, Steve and I meet weekly to make decisions on how to mitigate unanticipated revenue shortfalls and unbudgeted expenses. Some of those decisions are, uh, we don't fill vacant positions right off. We delay hiring positions. Um, in some departments, we're able to use salary savings from employees being out on income protection and workers' comp. Um, this last year, we had seasonal employees finish up earlier than anticipated. Um, over this last year, we also received and administered six COVID-related grants. Some of these grants did offer relief to the operating budget. Those grants, um, were the United Way of York County, the Bureau of Justice Assistance Coronavirus Emergency Grant, the Keep Me Healthy Grant, the FAA Cares Act, the Center for Tech and Civic Life Grant, and the FEMA Disaster Grant. Thank you.
Question for, um, Ronnie. I see Counselor Hanselman's hand up. Go right ahead.
I love these reports, Ronnie, so much. Thank you for the time you put into it. And you answered every, every single question I had on the number side. You answered in your memo, which I really appreciate. Um, the one thing, and I feel like I should know the answer to this, so I apologize for having to ask, but, um, with the significant increase in the, um, tax lien revenue collected, was that just a timing? Like it was six, I'm sorry, I just closed that window. Was it six fifty-five?
Yeah, that is, yeah, and that is all timing.
Okay, okay. That's what I was thinking, but just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions about the last quarter of twenty twenty-one? That report? Anything that you want to say, Steve, or are we all set with this? Okay.
No, I, I very much appreciate, uh, again, Ronnie and I meet weekly on, on the financial reporting. The house is always in order. Uh, I get all of the reports that, that I need. Um, and, and I just, I think, you know, this, we have the last quarter report and we'll have the, the year, the year-to-date for the last fiscal year coming up. But, um, you know, during this, this COVID period, when, when nothing has acted appropriately, hasn't acted as historical, right? Uh, the city has done extremely well. Between the, the federal assistance that's come, that's come through, the, the additional stimulus money, people have been paying their taxes on time. We aren't, we weren't dependent on revenue streams or highly impacted by, you know, changes in tourism and, and things of that nature. So, uh, from a municipal operation side, we've done very well over this last eighteen-month period.
Okay, we will go on to the next item on the agenda, twenty-one dash five one one dash zero one. Ordered to accept, oh wait, we have to vote on that one, don't we, Steve? The first one should.
Yes.
Do I need to vote? I'm sorry, guys. So I need a motion on accepting and approving the city financial reports for the fourth quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Second.
That is a motion by Deputy Mayor Hurley and a second by Counselor Stackpole. Any more discussion? I'll call the roll. Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Twenty-one dash five one one dash zero one. Ordered to accept and approve the city financial reports for the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-one twenty-two. Ronnie, go right ahead.
Thank you. The first quarter, July through September of twenty twenty-one, ends three months of operations under the twenty-one twenty-two municipal budget, having a target of three twelfth or twenty-five percent for an annualized budget administration. The revenue summary report, including real estate, personal property tax collections, is closing at thirty-one point six percent or six point six percent over budget year-to-date. The expense summary report is closing with total expenditures of seven point seven million, including encumbrances of two point seven million or thirty-one point five percent, which is six point five percent over target year-to-date. As you can see on the reports, we include encumbrances. So with encumbrances, twenty-three point three percent or just one point seven percent under the twenty-five percent target rate. Um, the twenty-one twenty-two budget has proven after three months of operations, an accurate reflection of the city's total cost of provisions. Again, I attached the five standard reports for your review. My general observations for the months of July through September are as follows. Um, general assistance, their non-contract services line is over budget at fifty point one percent expended. Again, you'll see the offset to that. In the revenue line, we get reimbursed for all money spent at seventy percent. Uh, we continue to see retirements and resignations in this fiscal year. We've had two in planning, um, some in police and some in communications. Uh, the planning budget you'll see is at sixteen point one percent expended as they have an open planner position and just recently hired an administrative assistant. Um, the first quarter revenue report closed at thirty-one point six percent, which is six percent higher than where the city should be with property taxes billed into installments, March and September. Um, it's important to note that revenue sharing, uh, projections again are based upon the most recent revenue forecast at the available, at the available time of publication. We are at thirty-one point one percent collected for revenue sharing. Uh, we budgeted the four point, four point five percent, um, state revenue projection is provided by the state treasurer as of July one twenty-one. And that's exactly what was budgeted, which is three point four million dollars. Automobile, automobile excise taxes write on at twenty-five percent. Pays you throw is at twenty-four percent. Building permits is at sixty-four percent. Overall, in relation to the twenty twenty-two adopted budget, any material concerns noted for this first quarter are being mitigated. As always, we continue to closely monitor all areas to ensure that any variances are recognized in a timely fashion and, uh, mitigating action is taken. And that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
To Ronnie, questions from councilors? Ronnie, I just have one question and it comes from my previous service on the town council, which was, how do we stand with the school financial report reconciliation? Are they up to date on their, and the only reason I ask now is because I watched a school committee meeting where they were just doing August at their, I think it was October meeting. So I'm just curious, is that an issue? And what are we going to do about it if it is?
So Cheryl is presenting the reports for September tonight to the school board. Um, so they are where they should be. Um, we were a little bit behind and it was because of just new staff in key positions here between the treasurer, the business manager, the school payroll person. between the treasurer, the business manager, the school payroll person. So we did struggle for a little bit, but it seemed, we seemed to be back on track.
Excellent, glad to hear that because I just remember that that was an issue, and I just don't want it to become one. So I'm glad that you're on top of that.
Yeah, I can tell you that Cheryl makes reconciliation a priority, and we work on it weekly, to be honest with you.
Any other comments or questions from counselors? I will ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Hurley, I think. Any more discussion? I will call the roll. Councilor Martell?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Thank you, Ronnie.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too. Twenty-one dash five two seven dash zero one. Order to review and approve a draft City of Sanford policy for workplace vaccination and testing pursuant to OSHA Emergency Temporary Standard eighty-six F R six one four zero two for COVID-19 vaccination and testing. Steve is going to present on this before I ask for a motion. Thank you, Steve.
So we, we knew this has been in the works for quite a period of time. The Biden administration had directed OSHA to issue what is now an emergency temporary standard via, via OSHA. Originally, I had advised the council that we were not going to come onto that. And then it was, became known to me that the state of Maine has an accepted plan with OSHA that whatever regulation OSHA adopts, the state will follow suit. Therefore, the Department of Labor that oversees us in the private, and, excuse me, in the public sector will adhere to the same OSHA standards, thus the ETS. On November fourth, OSHA published the emergency temporary standard, which included the mandatory vaccination and/or the mandatory, and/or testing and masking for those employees that will not be vaccinated. So that was issued on the fourth. I grabbed the information that afternoon on the fifth, last Friday, went into the realm of information there and spent the lion's share of that day writing the regulation, the policy as mandated under the ETS standard. I'd like to bring up for you a memo that I have. Put this over for you. This talks to the, the emergency technical standard that's been mandated under OSHA. They issued it on the fourth of November. I drafted the policy. So in, when you go through the four hundred and ninety-page document that is the ETS, once you get by all of that, find out what the actual policy is. It starts on approximately page three eighty somewhere in there. Then I found the resources that there is a, the, the OSHA put forward an example policy for employers to use as a starting base. And I started to populate that and fill that in. So in summary, the state of Maine has an adopted plan, providing the Department of Labor, who enforces workplace safety for us as a public sector employer, shall adopt the federal OSHA standards. That policy called out for, I say called, called out for the adoption to bring into compliance with the ETS masking and testing option for those employees not wanting to become vaccinated. But that's the policy that I have written according to the federal standards. Before I get into that, new information was made available that I just found today. I was looking for that. But the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals has put a pause. So they put a stay on the OSHA COVID-19 vaccination and testing emergency standard. That stay was issued on November eighth, so just yesterday. We're currently under a stay. The lawsuits were filed in the U.S. Courts of Appeals for the Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, Eleventh, and the D.C. Circuits. They're now going to hold a lottery to see which court is actually going to hear that, and that lottery isn't until November sixteenth. Petitioners are still filing replies to this at this point in time. So what does this mean for us as an employer? Tells me that it's under a stay. It's going to move all of the timeframes forward. Originally, we had to have this in place by December second. We had to have the policy in place. Anybody that was going to become vaccinated had to be so vaccinated by January fourth, and we had to be in compliance by January fourth or face a fine of about fourteen thousand dollars per occurrence. So we are under a stay, but what I'm going to ask the council to consider this evening is in the policy that was written, I'd like to describe the major elements that are in that. You really don't have a, only choice that you have is to either, as an organization, mandate vaccinations for all, and anybody not mandated would be displaced from work, no longer be allowed to work here, such as has happened with the firefighter paramedics that we have. We have two people that are on hold pending the EMS board hearing on the twelfth. That's finalized from emergency rule to the standard and technical rulemaking. Then those two employees are going to be displaced from service indefinitely from the city. They're out of a job. You can adopt a mandate for vaccination and do that same thing for the entire employment base. Or, under the OSHA standard, you can adopt, as I've written this policy, that for anybody that is not vaccinated, starting January fourth, would have to mask during, when they're at the physical workplace. And then they would have to submit to weekly testing and submit those test results to the city at their expense. Right now, in Maine, the testing is free. I have significant concerns about testing capacity and getting timely response on those tests. We are working to address that, and the county has bought, you know, opera funds, they have bought a PCR testing machine that they're going to make available to us as public sector employers so we can get more rapid response as far as PCR testing is concerned, not just the rapid test. So in summary, in the nine-page document that I've included in your packet as far as meeting the policy to meet the OSHA standards, if we have to implement that, would provide for, as of January fourth, all employees must provide a proof of vaccination form. So this is the critical part. Even though this is under stay, I would recommend that as an organization, I've worked with Stacy Howes, our HR director, she has all of the documentation downloaded and ready to go. We'd like to submit that out to the employment base starting tomorrow to fill out the requisite form that comes with this so we can find out who is and is not vaccinated and affirm that status. We're going to be mandated under this, this OSHA regulation to report that, and we can be audited as such. So we would start that process as a bare minimum. Employees who are not vaccinated and do not wish to become vaccinated must provide the proof of vaccination or the proof that they aren't vaccinated. They would immediately start wearing a face covering at all times when at the workplace. Unvaccinated employees must also submit to testing and submit their results every seven days, providing results to the city each seven-day period until such time as OSHA, the ETS, is lifted and/or amended. Employees not vaccinated as of January fourth of 2022 are required to adhere to the following timeframes. So assuming that this, if they issued this on the fourth, hit the ground running on the fifth, this would be the timeframe. This has been stated at this point. But in order to be fully vaccinated by January fourth, 2022, they must obtain their first dose of the vaccine no later than November twenty-third. That's using the longest time period, which is the Derna. It's the two dose, so first dose, four-week separation, second dose in two weeks for that to, after the second dose, to become fully vaccinated. So they have to obtain their first dose of the vaccine no later than November twenty-third, 2021, and a second dose no later than November twenty-first, 2021. Or a single-dose vaccine, vaccine, such as the J and J, could be had on that same day on December twenty-first to meet the requirements for January. Employees would be considered fully vaccinated two weeks after receiving the requisite number of doses pursuant to what they're, they're taking. All employees must affirm the vaccination status under the following timeframe. I've put the timeframes out here and just described those to you. Supporting the COVID-19 vaccination, the requisite that's called out there, the city will provide support for employee vaccination, including providing for up to four hours of paid time at a regular rate of pay for each of their vaccination doses. If recovery from side effects is needed, the employees should utilize their requisite accrued time, pick time, or any absence from work following any vaccination dose. So it is not calling out under the standard, the federal standard, the city pay for any recovery time if there is such time on a COVID dose. Further, as far as removal from the workplace, the city will provide information on how the employer will comply with the CFRs, which provides that the employees must, one, require employees to promptly notify the employer when they receive a positive COVID-19 test and/or are diagnosed with COVID-19, and, two, immediately remove such employees from the workplace, and, three, keep those employees removed till they meet return-to-work criteria. So in the policy, that was left open, how the employer does that. I simply pulled from the last amendment for our epidemic and pandemic policy that has the two-tier system in there. If you're vaccinated, there's one system and mechanism and testing that we can keep you at work and/or displace you if you're positive. If you're unvaccinated, there's a second series of timeframes that are involved as far as displacing you from work and bringing you back when you're post-symptomatic. The CFR also provides for the policy, must provide for information on how the city will comply with this standard and address the COVID-19 testing for employees in the workplace who are not fully vaccinated. Employees must test and submit test results on a seven-day interval until the ETS is lifted. My hope here is that we can use the PCR testing machine at the county level, set up specific times, a day and time of the week, where the handful of employees that would fall under this category would go, get their test, and those test results would immediately be sent to us as the employer, and we're mandated to maintain those records and make those available should OSHA audit. Further, the face coverings, the policy provides for information on how the employer would comply with twenty-nine CFR, which generally requires employees to ensure that each employee who is not fully vaccinated wears a face covering when indoors and when occupying a vehicle with another work, with another person within the work. So the policy that was drafted, has been drafted. That in my copious, right here. This is the policy that's in the council packet. That's for, for the purposes of the mandate that was called out. That's towards the purpose, scope of which I've gone over largely with you as far as all of those, those elements. But it goes into the specific detail about each, each of the types of vaccines. It goes into where the employees can obtain that. It calls out the fact that employees working inside the designated healthcare facilities, which is fire EMS facilities, are also mandated to be vaccinated pursuant to ten dash one forty-four C M R, chapter two sixty-four of Maine CDC. This is what I'm waiting for the hearing for EMS on the twelfth to affirm. If EMS affirms this as, as technical rule, rulemaking, in other words, making it permanent, then the two employees that we've displaced on paid administrative leave right now will be discharged from service because their ability to maintain their EMS license will be lost. So there is a class of employees. So for those employees that, even if they're not a paramedic and EMS, they're by working at one of our two fire, fire stations, they're swept into this healthcare facilities classification, they must be vaccinated. They do not have a choice otherwise. Other employees that do not work inside of what's defined as a healthcare facility and/or defined as a healthcare worker under the state statutes would fall under this OSHA regulation and policy as being presented currently. Again, they have to report their vaccination status. Employees must request an exemption. So it does provide for those abilities under the Americans with Disabilities Act and Title Seven of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. That's where the religious exemption comes in. I've left this language in here specifically. I'm still reviewing that with legal counsel to make sure that we have the appropriate references to the American with Disabilities Act and Title Seven as it relates to the city's employment. That has not yet been satisfied. Again, vaccination, it has the complacency date of January fourth in here. That date will now move. So again, I'm just reviewing this such that if the stay is lifted, and we have to move rapidly on this, I'm looking for council input tonight as to what elements in this policy you would, you would not accept, and I would have to make such amendments. Because knowing that one, once this goes back into effect, if it does go back into effect, I have just thirty days to get this policy in place and that, working on. All right, so employees, then it has information as to where the employees may, may obtain vaccinations. They can get those vaccinations free at thirteen sixty-five Main Street. Got the hours and the times and dates in here. They can go, also go to their primary care physician, go to Walmart, Hanford Walgreens, and healthcare clinics. The, the appropriate references in here as far as that as well. Testing and face covering, all employees as of January fourth will be required to undergo regular COVID-19 testing and wear a face covering when in the workplace. All these procedures for testing and face coverings are described in the relevant sections of this policy. For the vaccination status and the acceptable forms, the regulations that provide for. Goes for vaccinated employees are required to provide proof of COVID-19 vaccination regardless of where they received it. And it goes into all of the ways that they can provide proof of that vaccination status. Okay, proof of vaccination should generally, should include the employee's name. So it has all of the requisite information that we are mandated under this Complacency Act to maintain those records for OSHA submission and regulation, review and audit. And the dates that I've outlined here, again, this is what made me nervous, was getting this policy in place because if an employee is not vaccinated now, and they want to meet the January fourth deadline so that they don't have to mask up and submit to seven-day testing, that timeline is getting very close. November twenty-third is first shot in the arm. So again, this spells out the requirement. We have to give them up to four paid hours to get vaccinated if it's on a workday. If they get vaccinated on a, on a non-assigned workday, there is no compensation or time allowance for that. If they, if they have to recover from symptoms from the shot, then that time will, will not be paid. And they will have to use their accrued leave, example sick leave, to cover additional time. If an employee is vaccinated outside of their approved duty time, they will not be compensated. So the following is a procedure for requesting the time to go get your shot. If it's during anticipated work, a day that you're scheduled to work. So we're asking for forty-eight hours prior notification. We find that fair and reasonable for that, to make that request. Again, there's a four-hour maximum, assuming you shouldn't have to incur that because the vaccination center here in Sanford takes scheduled times as well as walk-in. They've been doing, prior to the implementation of this, about two hundred and fifty per day. So it's a relatively light load for them to accomplish. Then, under employee notification of COVID-19 and removal from the workplace, the city requires employees to promptly notify the supervisor when they have tested positive for COVID-19. For COVID-19. All of these procedures in here are extracted directly out of our previously and currently amended and adopted epidemic and pandemic policies. So there is no change in this. Just comes right out of that policy, and there is the two-tier. If you're vaccinated, there's one mechanism we use. If you're unvaccinated, there's a. If you're vaccinated, there's one mechanism we use, if you're unvaccinated, there's a and use, uh, Family Medical Leave Act, income protection, sick time and workers' compensation, and vacation, uh, pending effect according to collective bargaining agreements, as it pertains to, uh, utilization should you experience time off. Have to offer you the ability to use unpaid leave and, and allow you to do that, without using your accrued, uh, benefits. If there is a government shutdown, and is so declared by the city council, the city will pay employees their current hourly rate, so that's if you choose to shut the organization down, uh, for a short period of time for some adaptation. Then, I also drew in from the epidemic and pandemic policy, the on-job exposures, that was a new area that was just recently amended. If we make a determination that you are exposed, uh, and contracted COVID during the performance of your work duties here, and that's a reasonable determination, then the city is going to cover that lost time, uh, for that recovery period. Then, the return to work, all of those same clauses comes right out of our epidemic and pandemic policy. Uh, that part does no, no longer pertains. Then, the COVID testing, again, if you're not fully vaccinated by January 4th, you must submit to the testing every, uh, seven days and report those results to the city, and the city will keep a track, uh, track a record of, of that testing. Once you test nega- uh, negative on that, you continue to mask up, your employment is not at risk, and you can work for the city. This is, goes into the face covering requirements, no different than what the face covering requirements have been in the past, as far as what you can and cannot use, as far as a, a face covering. Then, the exemptions, if you have an employee that is alone in a room with floor-to-ceiling walls and in a closed door, they do not have to wear the covering. Uh, if it's for a limited time while you're eating or drinking, you don't have to wear your covering. And when wearing, employees wearing a respirator or face mask, is determined that the use of a face covering is infeasible or creates a greater hazard, that's very open-ended, depending for legal interpretation on that. New hires will be, will be notified of what this policy is, as far as, uh, testing and covering, uh, is notified of that, so they knowingly know that, that they have that option and/or have to be vaccinated as part of a term or condition of employment. Confidentiality here, as far as the records, HR has those, and it's only, uh, accessible by OSHA if we're audited, direct questions to our human resources. So, this policy, uh, other than I, I need, still need legal, need legal interpretation on the ADA and Title VII, as far as reasonable accommodations, because I note specifically that in the, um, the frequently asked questions that I thought were extremely well-done on the federal website, I included, uh, the expanded version of that in your packet in a PDF format. This is the area that is most left open-ended, ill-defined, uh, the ADA complacency, we've dealt with that before, very open-ended, I seek legal counsel on that, and the Title VII, the religious exemption, if somebody is, um, strongly convicted to their religious beliefs, but there's no test for that. I need further language and advisement on how to deal with the Title VII element. That ends my presentation on that, I just, I seek from the city council any yays or nays as far as the do's and don'ts with this particular policy, so that I can clean this up, finish it up, uh, and if the stay is lifted, and the, the federal government actually pushes forward with that OSHA standard, and the state of Maine doesn't, some, some, uh, some-wise other violate the state plan that they have, we, as a public sector employer of over 100 employees, must comply with this policy. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Steve, um, and thank you for the extensive work that you've done on this. Um, I'm fine with it. My only question to you is, if for some reason the stay, um, is lifted and, and then they rule, and they rule that it cannot, the, the rule, the OSHA mandate can't go forward, can we adopt this ourselves?
You could, yes.
Okay, all right, so, after full discussion, and I'm not asking for a motion right now, but the motion that would be made tonight would be a tabling motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, further discussion by the council, so, I see Councilor Hanselman's hand up.
Thank you, um, and, Seemay, but that was a, a great presentation, and I can't imagine the work that went into it. The question that I have, which I, is in a section that you actually noted is still pending some work, but it sounds like in the FAQs, and if I wrote this correctly, Section 6J, that they are allowing self-tests if they're, um, using, if we use a proctor or have it otherwise monitored. So, I'm just wondering if in the event this does move forward, and we have folks that are subject to the masking and testing requirement, to make it somewhat less interruptive or easier, you know, is that something that we could be prepared to do, or any, any thoughts on if that, that approach would be viable versus, uh, you know, some up-commerce and PCR test that takes more time, or even doing a rapid test, um, have, or, or is that still just so draft, we don't, we don't really know yet?
Yep, so I'd have to check back with Stacy again as far as her availability, uh, I, I do know that there are rapid tests out there and, and more readily available than when we, uh, first obtained our current inventory. We've been using the rapid test, uh, if we have a, uh, not, not a close encounter, what, what's, my, my brain's gone to mosh, uh, close contact, there we go, not, not a close encounter of the third kind, a close contact, right? So, if we have a close contact at work, we do use the rapid test, uh, the initial testing, uh, and rely on, uh, PCR the, the, the three to five days out, so, um, so I would be very comfortable in using the rapid testing on a weekly basis with a proctor, uh, and if we get a positive hit there, shift somebody immediately over to the PCR test. Hopefully, the county's gonna, I, I missed the first five minutes of that segment today for the EMA meeting, so I, I, I put a, a communication out to Megan to see where that is at, but my understanding is that they were going to have that available for the public sector employees here in York County, as a much more, as, as an expedited process to get a PCR done.
Thank you.
They have the machine, I just, I'm not sure of the status, if, if they've got the trained individual to have that up and running, yeah.
Does that answer your questions, Councilor Hanselman?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Markell has his hand up. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, I, I have, I guess some similar questions around the testing. Um, one thing we do, my work is, it's, they've got nurses that come in and do a bunch of the rapid tests, and so it's basically proctored, um, and that works pretty well, and that way everybody gets a result in basically 15 minutes. Um, the other question I had was around the mask requirement, and whether that was specifically listed because, um, or not, because, just because you're vaccinated doesn't mean you can't spread the Delta variant or the original variant, um, so, I'm just questioning whether that either should be universal or not universal, and where that's coming from.
Uh, so, my draft of this policy was based upon the, the federal draft, which brings you into complacency with the OSHA regulation, which only requires masking for those individuals that are unvaccinated. But, didn't deviate from, from that requirement, because absent the OSHA push on this, the federal regulation on this, would not have drafted this particular policy unless at a request of the council. The draft was pursuant to meeting the OSHA requirements.
Okay, thank you. And I'll, I'll just add that, you know, this is still, you know, in litigation, so, um, you know, we can continue to kind of clean up the draft as we need to, if needed, but, you know, I, I'd prefer not to implement this unless we had to.
I believe much of the case law, I mean, I got this from a lawyer, uh, much of the case law goes back to a Cambridge case, uh, around somewhere in the early, um, uh, it had to do with polio, it had to do with Cambridge, Massachusetts, and that's the case that I think is being tested here. It's, it's held up for almost a hun- for about 100 years, so it's gonna be interesting to see what, which would change here.
Anyway, well, we won't have to have that discussion on whether we want to implement this, because we're gonna wait and see what the court, um, case does. Um, we are, uh, OSHA, we follow OSHA requirements in the state of Maine, so we know if this is carried forward, what we're gonna have to do. So, I guess unless there's more discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and a second by, who has made that second?
Tom Martel.
Oh, Councilor Martel, okay. Motion by Deputy Mayor Hurley and second by Councilor Martel. No discussion on the tabling motion, I will call the roll, uh, Councilor Martel?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, so that is unanimous of all those present. Thank you, Steve, that was a lot of work. Okay, we are, council member comments. Councilor Martel, do you have anything this evening?
Uh, I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Councilor Hanselman?
Thank you, I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to the friends of downtown and over 40 local businesses that did, uh, something similar to what Councilor Stackpole mentioned in, uh, the recent, uh, Sanford Scarecrows event, and we did get over 100, um, folks that, uh, uploaded selfies of themselves at various businesses, I think there was a really diverse, uh, a group of businesses represented here in our community, there were some chamber members, non-chamber members, restaurants, retail, construction, um, the York County Emergency Management folks participated, so all around, just a really fun event, getting some great feedback from folks, and, um, pretty exciting to have happen here this fall, and we look forward to doing it again next year, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Stackpole?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to, uh, I want to say congratulations to everybody who, uh, put their name forward in the recent election, uh, whether you're a winner, uh, whether you didn't win, uh, you either win or you learn, so, uh, and even if you win, you learn something too, right? You learn what your responsibilities are going to be, uh, coming up in the future. But, it takes courage to put your name forward, um, and, uh, so I congratulate everybody who put their name forward, and, you know, if you, uh, if you don't win, as I said, you learn, and, uh, as everyone else, uh, has said in the past, you kind of pick yourself up, dust yourself off, decide whether you want to do it again, uh, but then you take what you've learned and, and moved ahead. So, congratulations to all, we want to keep as many, uh, people involved in public office and offices and on committees, uh, variety and diversity is important, uh, so keep up the good work, everybody.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Um, just, uh, let everybody know, I don't, I don't think it's been mentioned this evening, the York County Emergency Management at the Marshalls has, um, obviously still has hours for adults, Tuesdays and Thursdays, 1 to 7, and Saturdays, 8 to 4, if you want to go in for a booster, if you decided to get a vaccine, you'd like to start the process. They've also added pediatric hours, which is 5 to 11-year-olds, um, from, on Fridays, 3 to 7 PM, and on Sundays, 8 to 4 PM, um, so you can get your kiddos started if you'd like to get the vaccination, um, for them. The school district, I know, has scheduled vaccine clinics in school, and just for any parents who, I'm, everybody's getting the notifications, just for the public to know that they are offering hours, if your kid is fine getting the shot by themselves with no parental support, and they're also offering hours at the schools where their parental support can come in and be there with their child when they, uh, when they get the vaccine. And this, of course, is for those who are choosing to get their children vaccinated, so, and that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hurley. Um, I would like to add my congratulations to Councilor Hanselman on being re-elected, and to, uh, Councilor-elect Becky Brink, look, we look forward to welcoming her on board in January. Uh, that's all I have this evening, I will go on to future agenda items. Councilor Martel?
I don't have anything more tonight, thank you.
Councilor Hanselman?
Thank you, uh, one thing on my mind is maybe a project or future workshop for the Economic Development Subcommittee, um, if we can get any of the Bitterford folks willing to, um, share some of their, um, wisdom, you know, challenges and, and opportunities that they've experienced in their downtown area and their community as a whole. I've been really more connected to them than usual in the last six months, um, and have just really seen some amazing things happening there, and, and they're not Stanford, um, but they've really accomplished doing some great things, and I'm, I love an opportunity for our, some of our leadership to connect with some of their leadership in economic development, I don't know what that looks like, or if it's a workshop, um, and I know everybody's really busy, and they're going to be asking a lot of Bitterford leadership to meet with us, but if there's some way to connect with them, I think that could be just helpful in understanding how they've accomplished, what they've accomplished there, maybe there are some of those pieces we can use in Stanford.
And I will tell you, Councilor Hanselman, that I have started that conversation with people in Bitterford, so we may end up having a group that might want to just go to Bitterford and sit down outside and chit-chat about and walk the streets and just see what they've done over the last few years, because I agree with you, sometimes it's helpful to hear from other people that some of the issues that we're going through, they were going through as well, and how they follow them. So, yes, I'm totally on board with that, and we will pursue that for sure, but, um... Councilor Stackpole, any other agenda items?
Uh, I'm all set, thank you, all set, thank you.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Um, I'm all set as well.
I am as well, and thank you all for attending this evening, and I'll declare us adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Night, everyone, thank you.